Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to join you via Zoom. Can you all hear me? Yes, thank you. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 11th, 2025 meeting. All council is present. I am joining you via Zoom from Washington, D.C. I'll ask the city clerk to establish a quorum and call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Echols?
Here.
Councilmember Landrum?
Here.
Councilmember Lefay?
Here.
Mayor Potem Edwards?
Here.
And Mayor Wickson?
Via Zoom, thank you. With that, I'm going to start this evening again with that moment of silence, and I'd like to take a minute to remember a very good friend of all of ours, Terry Simons, who passed a little over a week ago. Councilmember Edwards, can you lead us in the flag salute, please? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Closed session, there was no closed session today, so there is no meeting or no report out from that. I just want to, before we start in with mayor and council member reports and updates, is to let the community know that we're pulling item 9A this evening, which was for animal services. We will bring that back at a future meeting, potentially in two weeks, if not longer. The item was not ready to be presented tonight and move forward, so we will not be hearing 9A, and we'll be pulling that item. But that will go into mayor and council member reports, and I will kick off this evening, if you will indulge me. We're in Washington, D.C. I'm here with the city manager and the city harbor director. We're attending the CEMAC conference, which is the acronym for California Marine Affairs and Navigation. We started out this morning visiting the Army Corps Engineers, and our harbor director attended the conference all day. We had an opportunity to break out from the conference and meet with Congressman Carbohall this morning, and also with the Department of, we met with Boham to talk about offshore wind and that status. And we also met with the staffers from Congressman Panetta's office. So upon returning at the next meeting, we will give you updates on all those meetings. And tomorrow is a whole day of CEMAC conferences and visiting legislative days on the hill. In the last two weeks since we met, I've been attended several meetings, one with State Parks discussing the Back Bay, Three CE Energy Company and our seat on the board this year, SlowCog, met with InverEnergy Offshore Wind Company, and attended the REACH Symposium Workshop down in Santa Barbara. So if there's any information anyone would like regarding any of those, please feel free to email me, and we can chat or set up an appointment. And with that, I will turn it over to councilmember Echols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's good to hear from you from D.C. We wish you safe travels. A couple of quick items. I'm continuing my outreach to residents and business owners with regard to beautification issues in the city of Morro Bay, and I've been receiving just really some fantastic input. So if you have anything that you would like to share with me regarding beautification, I'd love to hear from you. I'm also establishing some office hours so that I can meet with constituents on a regular basis, but I don't know exactly when to hold those. So I'm thinking of maybe two different times, once per week, but alternating time schedules. So I'd like to hear from you with regard to what would be the best time to hold those office hours. If you would, please email me. You can find all our council members and the mayor's email address on the city's website. So I'd appreciate an email from you. I can put you on my newsletter list as well and involve you in the office hours as well as the town hall meetings that I have occasionally online. Last, it was an honor and a privilege, there were a couple other council members as well. On Monday, we were at the Police Department for the swearing-in of our newest officer, Miguel Martinez. Miguel holds a special place with me because he went to Morro Bay High School with my kids, and they graduated together. So we're extremely proud of Miguel, and it was an honor to be there. He's truly homegrown, loves the town, and now he is serving all of us. So congratulations, felicidades, to Miguel. We appreciate your service. Thank you.
Let's go down the line. Mayor Potem?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind the community of the new food program that I mentioned last meeting that's put on by Slow Food Bank this coming Thursday, February 13th, at the Morro Bay Library from 4:30 to 5:30. There will be staples, meat, and other produce available for pickup, and there's no ID required. The Citizens Finance Committee had their meeting. There were various areas of discussion. The Revenue Subcommittee tasked for looking at revenue generation opportunities gave a progress report, and they hope to have their task complete to bring information back to us by June. The committee also recognized and found the joint meetings with HAB, the PWAAB and the City Council very useful, and they hope to have other opportunities with all of us in 2025. Their report will be brought before City Council on February 25th. It will include compliance with Measure Q and E expenditures of funds and a forward-looking report at the funds revenue and expenditure status from 2025 to 2030, so a five-year span. And also Chair Stephen Peck was selected as the Advisory Board's representative for the WAMPAK. I also attended the Morro Bay Power Plant Subcommittee. It's been a while. I was happy to have councilmember Echols with me and our interim city attorney, Rob Schultz, as new members of the Subcommittee, and we had a really great candid discussion there on where we were going to go from here with our applicant. And hopefully, we'll have some recommendations to bring before council soon. And lastly, I would personally like to recognize African-American History Month for the month of February, as originated in the United States of America in memory of important figures like President Abraham Lincoln, who issued the Emancipation Proclamation, and Orator Frederick Douglass. More importantly, the encouragement of teaching of the history of African-Americans in the public school system in order to preserve that history. That's the end of my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
Hello. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor. I personally know what hard work it is, what you're doing in D.C. If it sounds glamorous, it's really not. And I think it's snowing there, if I'm not mistaken. So I really appreciate your efforts there and staff as well. I was attended some of the same meetings that have been mentioned, so I won't go into those. I guess, let's see, I'll start with the HAB as a liaison to the Harbor Advisory Board. I attended their meeting recently, and where they received a presentation by NOAA. And it was discussed that they're looking for an advisory council for the Chumash Sanctuary, and there will be 12 public voting seats. The application for those, they're in specific criteria, so if you're interested, go to their website and look it up, but the application is open until March 7th. Also, the HAB nominated Advisory Board member Gene Doughty for the Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee, also known as WAMPAK. And they also recommended that the City Council consider extending Gene's seat on the HAB until the WAMPAK is completed. Let's see, I attended the county's Water Resources Advisory Council meeting, where that was the first meeting I'd been to, so that was interesting. The city held a meeting regarding the elementary school and the process of selling that, which was conducted by Mr. Singwald, and he did an amazing job. I was contacted recently by Wendy Blackert. She is, the county is interested in putting in a warming center in Morro Bay, and there's been a problem of who would facilitate that, and Wendy is really interested in doing that, so that's exciting news. And then lastly, I am announcing my next town hall meeting. It will be on February 23rd, Sunday, February 23rd, at the Community Center from 2:00 to 4:00. And it will be about the future of Morro Elementary School. There's been a lot of talk in the community about that, and I just want to hear what everyone's ideas are on that. So you're welcome, and all are welcome to come. And again, that's on February 23rd from 2:00 to 4:00.
Thank you. Councilmember Lefay?
Yes, I also went into the swearing-in ceremony for Miguel. That was a one, we have a wonderful addition to our Morro Bay Police Department. He was born and raised here, and he just turned 21 three days ago. And his first day on the job will be this Friday. So it was really nice to meet him. I also went to the San Luis Obispo Unified School District Board Meeting last Tuesday. I have some interest in the Morro Bay Elementary also, but what I heard at the San Luis Obispo Unified School District that might be of some interest to the people in here is they have approximately $8.4 billion, $8.4 million deficit, and they're probably in the process of laying off 52 teachers, counselors, and staff. This is going to impact Morro Bay High School, Del Mar, Los Sosos, and their only hope, I think, is they're going to be meeting with PG&E to see if they can get some concessions with PG&E to try to shore up their budget, because Diablo will be operating longer than it's been depreciated. So if your parents or you have any interest in the schools, you should be contacting your school board members and rallying for these teachers and counselors right now. It's pretty dire straits, really. And then I also met with State Parks. I'm very interested in the dredging of the Back Bay Marina, and that was the topic of discussion that we met with State Parks. We got the authorization from State Parks to try to study and really try to dredge that Back Bay Marina. The Coastal Commission, when we were up in Sacramento two weeks ago, they kind of gave us a little glimmer of hope. Instead of doing nearshore dumping from the soils from the Back Bay and the Marina, we might be able to create another shoreline. And so we're going to, Becca was there of the Harbor Department, and we got the authorization to try to study that and see if we can make that happen. So I'm very excited about that. What that will do for the city here is we'll have a, I think, a nicer marina, 118 slips back there. What would that mean for us? Well, we'll be able to charge a little bit more money. We're only charging $9 a linear foot back there right now, when the going rate is $20 a linear foot, and that's because you can't get out at low tide in the Back Bay Marina. So hopefully, we can actually get some traction on this now. So I was really excited to be involved in that, and I thank Carla and Yvonne. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lefay. City Manager?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and my staff and audience. It's so dark, huh? Is this is better? And I, as Mayor stated, I am accompanying her, attending the CEMAC meeting. Harbor Vitality Director is with us as well, and has been, as Mayor stated, has been very busy today and the rest of the week. We are going to stay busy and advocating for cities' interests, both in the harbor and elsewhere, citywide. While I'm attending those meetings, I want to thank the city staff team and the council members that are there for taking care of day-to-day business, including this upcoming storm preparedness. I am going to let Fire Chief McQueen to give you, give everybody an update on the upcoming storm. Before I do that, I wanted to kick it up first, let Mr. Singwald, Community Development Director, to give a quick update on the WAMPAK selection.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball, and good evening, Mayor and Council, Airline Singwald, Community Development Director. So since the council directed the WAMPAK composition on January 14th, four of the seven WAMPAK seats have been nominated. So we have James Costanzo from the Recreation and Parks Commission, Stephen Peck from CFAC, Mary Wakowski from Planning Commission, Gene Doughty from Harbor Advisory Board. Next week, I'm going to PWAAB to receive PWAAB's nomination. Then on February 27th, we have a meeting scheduled with the Barcadero Master Leaseholders for a nomination for their representative, and then we're also working with the National Estuary Program to receive their nomination. I anticipate by the end of the month, all of the nominations will be made. And then in March, I anticipate coming to the City Council with a resolution for the council to formalize the composition, naming all seven members of the Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee. I also wanted to emphasize that the WAMPAK certainly won't be the only forum or opportunity for stakeholder and public engagement in the Waterfront Master Plan. We have released the requests for proposals last week, and the RFP really emphasizes the importance of community engagement and stakeholder engagement in the Waterfront Master Plan update process. So we certainly will be reaching out and interviewing stakeholders, getting input from a very wide range of experts and stakeholders throughout the Waterfront Master Plan update process. And that concludes my update.
Fire Chief McQueen, could you please give an update on a storm?
Absolutely. Thank you, City Manager Kimball. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community members. Just wanted to provide a brief update on the upcoming storm. It's predicted to begin tonight and last through Friday, February 14th. The storm's anticipated to bring generally light to moderate rain tonight and tomorrow. Thursday morning, that's a different story. Starting Thursday, rainfall is expected to be very heavy, with peak rainfall amounts up to 1 inch per hour. We expect to receive between 3 and 5 inches of rain along the coast between Wednesday and Friday. They're predicting 3 and 1/2 to 4 inches for Morro Bay. There is a flood watch in effect, with moderate risk for small stream flooding and a high risk for urban flooding in some roads and parking lots throughout San Luis Obispo County. Winds are forecasted to be high, between 20 and 40 miles per hour, with gusts up to 50, so there is potential for isolated power and utility outages. We do also anticipate high surf conditions throughout the weekend. The city executive team has been coordinating with regional partners, including the operational area and county OES, and we are prepared to respond to any situations that develop. The fire department has increased staffing for Thursday in case of additional storm-related responses, and multiple fire departments throughout the county have increased staffing as well. Public Works has been ensuring the storm drains are clear and functioning. They've made sand available on Atascadero Road across from the city maintenance yard. Sandbags are available at Miners Hardware. I did go in there personally and confirm that they have woven plastic and burlap sandbags available for purchase. We did create a flyer to hand out to areas that have been impacted by flooding in the past, and fire department staff, myself included, went to the mobile home parks. We went to the businesses and homes along Preston, Arrol, Main Street, Little Morro Creek, and as well as the mobile home parks along South Quintana Road, and gave some information about the weather that's coming and just some preparedness information. I do want to take this opportunity to remind everyone, disaster preparedness does begin at your home. We recommend that people have enough supplies to shelter in place for up to 72 hours. This should include food, water, medications, as well as a method to recharge cell phones and other necessary medical devices. You should know your evacuation zone and have a go-bag prepared in case evacuations are needed. Create a plan with your family on where to go and how to reconnect with each other in the event of an evacuation. Disaster preparedness information can be found at readyslow.org. You can obtain your evacuation zone information, and through this portal, you can also sign up for Reverse 911 and Alert Slow notifications that can be sent to your cellphone as well as landlines. End of report.
Thank you, Chief McQueen. I also want to add that Public Works Department has been doing some maintenance since this entire winter started. So we wanted to make sure that we are as ready as we can be for any upcoming storm. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. And Subcommittee reports. Mr. Singwald, anything to share?
Yes, so for Power Plant Property Subcommittee, so on February 4th, City Manager and I met with the Subcommittee. The purpose of the meeting was really to update the new Power Plant Subcommittee on the VISTRA application and master plan status. So there is a new Power Plant Property Subcommittee, councilmembers Echols and Edwards. It was previously Mayor Wickson and Councilmember Edwards. And also during that meeting, we discussed AB 303 and implications for VISTRA's application in the power plant property. And then for Downtown Design Subcommittee, we met with the Subcommittee and set a planning commission date for the public forum to conclude the Downtown Design District Subcommittee work effort. And that date is March 18th, again, held here at the Vets Hall during the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. Mr. Qualick, anything for the WORF project?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no updates for the WORF Subcommittee.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to move into presentations and invite the chamber up for their quarterly update.
Oh, thanks. Good evening, councilmembers, leadership of the city. My name is Deena Lundquist. I am the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Chief Executive Officer. This is the second quarterly update that I've provided you as a result of the economic development contract that the chamber has with you. So the Chamber of Commerce is comprised of 11 board members, 2 and 1/2 staff members. We have 15 Government Affairs Committee members. We've increased that by three members this year. We had a great response to our election, to the community, for additional individuals who'd like to join the Government Affairs Committee, and we're quite proud as a chamber to have a Government Affairs Committee. That increases the intellectual dialogue with the city and with our council and with our local businesses as well. Our Ambassadors Committee is getting revitalized. That's an important committee that keeps our membership engaged, does periodic surveys with the businesses, makes sure that all of our membership are touched beyond myself and our membership director, to make sure that the chamber is relevant, is addressing their needs. If they have any questions or concerns, that we can meet those. We currently have 298 members, and that is approximately 2,800 jobs. We have five or four new board members that joined us this year. Mr. Duffy of Tenover Studios, Lauren Leidinger of CAP Slow, Denise Slow of South Bay Women's Network, and Sherry Paul of the Morro Bay Bird Festival. All of these are leaders in the community with nonprofits and business owners as well. As well, we also have seven other members of our board that work tirelessly on committees, be it the Government Affairs Committee, the Ambassadors Committee, supporting the events that the chamber does on a regular basis. So I appreciate all of our board members and the hard work that they do to make sure that this chamber is relevant and is important within our community. A lot of our communities around this area, La Sosos, Cambria, Cayugas, they have volunteer chambers. They have dwindled over the years. I'm very proud that Morro Bay has a very vibrant chamber and has a good membership, and we have a strong contribution to our local businesses. So I think that's important to note. We've got one of our larger chambers in San Luis Obispo, and I think they do a great job, and our chamber has a good relationship with San Luis, Atascadero, and Paso, but we have a jewel in our own chamber. The two important staff members that I have that I think the chamber does a heck of a lot with, with a very small staff, is Lindsay Hansen and Jody Hollier, our marketing director and our membership director. So what is the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce and the foundation, the Morro Bay Foundation that we created a few years back? What are we doing to make a change in the business community? We make sure that we offer partnering opportunities for our businesses, so peer-to-peer, your neighbor on the street. If there's somebody that you need to do business with in this community, that we give you those introductions, and we provide you with not only the social, but the information in order to reach out to the right person that owns those businesses. Our advocacy efforts and our workforce development are another thing that you should be very proud of your Chamber of Commerce here in Morro Bay that we do. We had a nice meeting last week with the city manager and the assistant to the city manager with our Government Affairs Committee, and getting a better understanding of what the city goals will be in the future and what the Government Affairs Committee wants to partner with the city so that we can provide that voice for the businesses and make sure that they are informed with what the city is doing well, and if they need clarification on any policies or processes, that they are informed in that. So the chamber is the conduit between the business and our city government and our city departments as well. Resources, we have a plethora of resources that we provide businesses that sometimes they don't even know are there. The last thing we want is for our businesses to sit in silence and struggle. If they've been in business for 10 years or 10 days, there's different hurdles that you come across in that process, and we want them to have access to those as a chamber, and we do that in a multitude of ways in community, communicating that through our newsletter, through our Breakfast on the Bay, through our mixers, however we can get that information out, and then face-to-face, out on the street, meeting our business members and asking the questions and trying to help them with whatever issues that they may be incurring. And then our Morro Bay Chamber Foundation, particularly proud of that. We've committed to five scholarships this year for a total of $10,000. For a new foundation, that's awesome. We are focusing on providing that educational opportunity, not only to high school students, but for those individuals that are out in the workforce today that may want to go back to school and better themselves to obtain a higher education degree. Some folks don't get out of high school and know exactly what they want to do. They want to work in the workforce for a while, and then they decide, I think I want to be an accountant, I think I want to be a nurse, and we want to support that. That's going to help our community and make our community stronger. So the foundation has done a phenomenal job. They had a golf tournament last year that was extremely well-attended. They're going to continue that into next year. And the chamber as a whole is always communicating what our foundation is doing positively. And on communication, what is the chamber doing to make sure that we are supporting our businesses, sustaining our businesses, introducing new businesses to our community? We have a nice presence on Facebook, on Instagram. Our website has over 16,000-page views. Users are 5.7,000. We have a chamber newsletter with distribution of over 1,000 contacts, and we provide that twice a week. I've just instituted, on your behalf, my predecessor had that as a communic- I've just instituted on your behalf, my predecessor had that as a communication device, and I've revived it. And that goes out twice a quarter. And that includes insights from the CEO. It'll include insights from the city. I did a small piece on the new council members. I've just gotten another piece that we'll put out in our next edition from Ms. Gordon in regards to short-term vacation rentals. So we want to help with the messaging on what's new and exciting and happening within our city government. It also will be spotlighting businesses as well, get to know the businesses that are in our community. The Astero Bay News has also picked that up, so that was in their recent issue as well. So if we say something five times, you'll remember it. If I say it six times, hopefully you'll be able to tell me that. What's happening in the future is the rock radio station, I'm going to do a one-on-one, some Q&amp;A with one of their DJs on what's happening with the chamber, what's new, and how we're helping our small business community. We'll also start with some YouTube video updates on a regular basis. I'll be just updating the community on what the chamber is doing. I might do some interviews with businesses as well. So that's something that's going to be coming up in the future. So we're expanding our communication, making sure that all of our businesses are touched. This is busy, but it's a lot, and it's all that we do. And it's by the numbers who we are to our membership and who we are to the community. And Jody Halyer does a great job of reaching out through the various social media sites, communication through our newsletters, all of that, and what we do with our committees as well. Again, the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce supports economic development in a variety of ways. We provide networking opportunities through our Breakfast on the Bay, through our mixers. The mixers might seem like a simple thing, but they are a very important thing. Our ambassadors are there, our community is there, our businesses is there, are there. And it's a social setting where people are relaxed, they're able to connect and share not only best practices, but who you are, how long you've been in town, what you're doing. So those are really an important piece. Our advocacy, whether we're doing that through our Government Affairs Committee, whether we're working on workforce development with our educational institutions, from our high school to our community college, to Cal Poly, to the San Luis School Board, I've worked with all of those agencies to develop and understand what they're providing in the way of workforce that's going to, that's prepared now or going to be prepared in the future, what the needs of our employers are, and providing those so that our employers are ready to receive trained employees. This is just some data points. This comes from the REACH website. And I take away from this is there's two lines of business in our community, and that's our hoteliers and our restaurant industry and our retailers that are really the strongest piece of our business community. And understanding their workforce needs and providing the workforce to them and what's available to them is what's important, how we communicate with them, understanding their needs. That is something that the chamber is going to be addressing. There's a hospitality boot camp that is put on by the school district. I'm going to be introducing that to our hoteliers so that they have an opportunity for a trained workforce. The less time that they have to ramp up these individuals and the more formally-trained they are, the better experience we have for our tourists and family members who stay in our hotels. Some of the specific line items in the economic development requirements with our contract with the city are business attraction. So each month, I provide the Community Development Department, through REACH and through Loop, all of the properties available in Morro Bay for lease and for sale, square footage, who the realtors are, all the information that's needed, and that's updated on a monthly Business retention, we'll be presenting an annual survey that's one of the other asks in the contract that we are happy to do. There's, I think, 14 questions, real questions, other than what's your name and how many employees do you have. There's about 10 questions that we're going to be asking of the employer, employers in the community, and that's from home-owned businesses to brick-and-mortar businesses as well. We'll be utilizing the business application list of businesses, and we've kind of filtered through all of those so that we're going to get legitimate businesses and feedback. And we'll comprise that together and provide a report. The challenge with that is we've got some, a lot of surveys going on right now. So you've got a city survey that's going on. There's about three or four surveys that are happening right now, so I don't want to inundate the community with too many surveys at once. So I want to introduce this one probably at the beginning of Q2, so there'll be a little bit of breath time in between our survey and we get the best results we can. Local and regional partners that the chamber works with, REACH, as you're all aware of, your Cal Poly Local Economic Development Council, Workforce Development Board, the high school, as I mentioned, the New California Coalition, Chambers for Innovation and Clean Energy, you all, Mission Community and Service Corporation, and Visit Morro Bay, who is our neighbor. Chamber events that we held in the last four months. December was a bit of a slow month. Everybody was in the holiday season, and we didn't have a lot of events that month. But in October, we always have our Breakfast on the Bay, our mixers, and we had a movie night that was well-attended. November, we had our shop sip and stroll, which we'll have again this spring, and our Breakfast on the Bay. And then January, we've had our Breakfast on the Bay. We have a comprehensive events list so that everyone can mark their calendars for any of the chamber events that are coming up throughout the year. The ones that'll be coming up next month will be our annual summit, which will include our mayor, Bruce Gibson, and Michael Wamboldt from the Visit Morro Bay. Some possibilities as we continue throughout the year, and that I will be working with the Rec Department and Ms. Gordon and some of our nonprofits. Will be more of a Christmas theme throughout our city. I think we're missing an opportunity here. We have a lot of things that are happening in some of our other communities, and we don't have a real strong sense of the Christmas holiday throughout the month of December. So I'd like to do something with our local businesses, and they're interested in doing something that's going to give a lot more of that holiday cheer throughout the downtown district and the Embarcadero. I'm working with some of our local retailers so that our businesses can acquire some decorations, things like that. So we're working on some themes there to kind of take advantage of the, I forgot the name of it, the witches' paddle. And I don't want to take that, but we can certainly do something in the community to continue to build on that excitement that we see in other surrounding communities. So as you're leaving San Luis and you're driving north, stop in Morro Bay and enjoy what we have going on in October as well. And I think that will engage our community and enrich our businesses as well. Hours of operation are, come on over anytime you want, we're there. That is it. Can I answer any questions for you? Mr. Lefay?
All right. One thing, on the list of inventories that you have, and I do apologize, is that on your website?
Inventories?
The inventories of the...
Events?
No, available properties.
No.
They're not. So they're just given to the city or to the community development?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Deana. We appreciate the update from the chamber.
Mayor, sorry, Mayor.
Yes, City Manager.
Can I follow up on just a couple of things?
Quickly, please.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yeah, the first one is I wanted to just reconfirm that the holiday, we are, the holiday event that the chamber CEO mentioned earlier, the city is partnering with Visit Morro Bay and the chamber. We are looking at expand the current, our signature event during the holidays so that we would make a, we can have a more coordinated holiday campaign. We can attract visitors and promote our local businesses. So this is, this is one of the to-dos for this upcoming year for city staff, city team. And the second thing I want to follow up with, as CEO stated, Assistant to the City Manager, Whitney Gordon, and I attended the GAC meeting this last week. And a couple of things I wanted to, I wanted to share with the council and the public was that in GAC, talk about their interests while we are talking about the, our next city goal process. GAC's interests are, for example, they are interested in workforce housing. They are very, very much interested in the city's water from master plan. The process want to become part of that. And then GAC also are very, very interested in revenue generation for, for the city. They are, we also discuss parking and then a variety of issues that impact the city as a whole and the business community. I just want to clarify that. That's what we discuss. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. Appreciate that update. We're going to begin public comment tonight. It'll be a little bit different. Before I hand the reins over to Mayor Protem Edwards, since I'm not there to take speaker slips or call you up, she will be doing that in just a minute. And then I will take back over for the consent agenda. But before we begin public comment tonight, I want to read a brief statement on behalf of the city, city council, myself. And I would like to, at this time, for members of the audience, to, during public comment, to address the council on matters not on the agenda that are within the jurisdiction of the city. This means that comments must be limited to city business. Those desiring to speak on items on the agenda but unable to state items may also address the council at this time. The council requests that you refrain from making slanderous, profane, or personal remarks. And before we begin, I will just defer over real quickly to the city attorney if there's anything for him to add to that. Mr. Schultz?
Not at this time.
Thank you. With that, Mayor Protem, if you can take over for public comment, I appreciate it.
You got it, Mayor. I'd like to call forth Sean Farmer. And then after that, anyone else who would like to speak tonight may do so.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members and City Staff. My name is Sean Farmer. I'm here tonight with my wife and two friends, Linda and Terry Cosse. We're here to talk to you about the kite festival. We're the founders of the Morro Bay Kite Festival. It started in 2007. I don't know if any of you went last year, but the thing has gone crazy. It's like a monster we fed, and now all of a sudden it's, I had 10 flyers that called me from Iowa this week that want to come participate in our event this year. As many as you know, I don't own the kite shop anymore, but I still would love to see the kite festival go on. It's part of our, of our heart. It's, I think it's one of the best festivals in the county personally. So I'm here tonight to ask the city council and anybody in the community, we need help. For the last, this has been 18 years, 14 years, the four of us have basically put it on. We've had a few help. We have some people come help unload chairs and stuff maybe, but carrying speakers down on the beach for the sound system, all that, we've done. And I'm telling you, I'm going to be 63 years old this year. I don't want to carry speakers down on the beach anymore. So I'm here to ask the city and the residents of Morro Bay, is this something that the city wants to continue as much as we do, the kite festival and the residents? Or is this something that we want to wrap up and maybe put away? Because I got to tell you, our hearts are in it. We want, I want to be part of the kite festival as long as I can be, but we can't do it by ourselves anymore. So that's why I'm here tonight, to ask for the city's help, staff's help. Last year, the biggest complaint we had was for the melee leaving the rock. I had a friend come in from out of town, and it took him four hours to get from Morro Rock to the kite shop. That's ridiculous. I don't go to LA for that exact reason. I hate traffic. And that was the biggest complaint that we had last year, was the congestion of the traffic. So we have to come up with some kind of plan with the staff, the city, us, what we can do to make the flow in and out of Morro Rock. So when the people come to the festival, they enjoy it, and they don't leave mad because they got stuck in traffic. So everybody knows who I am. My phone number is on this piece of paper. I'd be glad to give you my email if you'd like to talk. I'm here. My wife and I and Linda and TC, we all would like to get together and see if we can make this happen. But like I say, that's in the city and the residents' hands. Is this something that we want to continue? And like I say, what I'm afraid is, it's, it's just going to keep growing because everybody that we, everybody wants to come. It's sought after. This bit, like I say, people from Iowa, we have people from Alaska, and these people pay their own ways and paid it for their own room just to come fly at our festival. It's pretty amazing. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. At this time, anyone else that would like to come forward for public comment may do so.
Hello, council, staff. Thank you for having me. My name is Sharice Hansen. Sorry, I didn't do a slip this time. I'm up here as an individual citizen, a community member. I'm also a business owner. I'm part of the HAB, but I'm not speaking with that hat on tonight. I just wanted to talk about the WMPAC, WOMPAC, that you guys have put together. One person from every advisory board, which I think is a great idea. Just one thing that I'd like to say, food for thought for when March comes around and you present all of the people that are going to be on that committee, that you look at them and think about our businesses being represented, our fishermen being represented. And then if that so happens, that if there's another category that is not represented, that you take that time to look and see if maybe you want to do the chamber CEO to represent businesses as a non-biased, all-business category, and then fishermen. Because I know that they mentioned that HAB is, you know, possibly an advocate for a fisherman, but it, we chose somebody that was not part of the fisheries industry. So once you actually get all the names in and figure out if businesses, restaurants, hotels, all of those things that are major facets of what is going on currently and what can happen in the future for the Embarcadero, that you give that a little look and possibly tweak it a little bit if you need to. All right? Thank you very much.
I was going to have a different speech, but I guess not. First off, I've been going to the kite festival every single year since I moved here, and I walk. And while I'm walking, I sing "Let's Go Fly a Kite" because what else would I do? And I will definitely help if you'll let me. I would love to. I love it so much. Anyway, I was very curious, you know, if you guys were going to, were going to comment on, you know, changing the format here. I was shocked when nobody tried to tell me that I couldn't come back here. I wasn't expecting that it would be true, but I was expecting to hear it. However, this does beg an interesting question, namely, what exactly is your purview? Because, I mean, you know, we have that one fella, comes up here all the time, talk about the, well, I mean, honestly, the ongoing genocide of the Palestinians and the apartheid. Because like, as I've mentioned before, the automated license plate readers that you guys have, those were developed by the Israelis to keep an eye on the Palestinians and their border. So if I come up here and talk to you about that, is that in your purview? And I mean, things like that. For instance, everything that all of us do, there's 10,000 people that live in this town. And, you know, how many of those people don't actually really live here? It's just, you know, that's how the census works. And there's so many, so many connections between all of us that it's really... And there's so many, so many connections between all of us that it's really hard to say, is this something that I can talk about or is it not? And I feel like the solution to this is simply to start out by making the case of why what I am talking about falls under your purview, even though you may not believe that it does. Rule number one, the rules work for you. That is rule number one. That is one of the first things that I learned. Daddy had a master's degree in business management. I know how this works. The rules work for you. This is an interesting idea because of course we have our city attorney here. And I feel like I don't really know the ins and outs of how you guys communicate, but it seems to me that for the most part, his job is basically to keep us from getting sued, which is very important. However, I would like to have a resource like that rather than to ask whether or not I can do this, rather to ask how I can do this. Is something really what's right for us?
Hard act to follow. Hi, you guys. I apologize. I'm having really high heart rate and it's irregular. And so I can't stay to speak for public speaking for the consent agenda. So I'm acknowledging that I'm stretching it a little bit. Two things. And I've known Bill Gaines for a very long time, and he's a good friend of my boyfriend who's an engineer. And I want to say, it seems to me that $293,000 is a lot of money. And I know, it's interesting that he decreased the bid today, right when we're going to, you're going to vote on it. And like, if I could just get all of you to talk into the speaker and not move your head, we would all hear you without spending any money right now. But I just say, I know that that's his business. That's how he makes money. And I've talked to several people who do audio engineering. I just wish you would get another bid, have another company give you some input, because that's a lot of money and we don't have the pack here. Okay, that's what I wanted to say. And now I want to talk about, um, the AB 303. That quite honestly, I'm really disgusted with it because I think that Dawn Addis did this so she could look good. Because when you say, "We're still going to establish reasonable setback of 3,200 feet," that's like two thirds of a mile. How far did those plumes, all that smoke go from Moss Landing? What's happened to insurance in the state of California for fires? They say, "Oh, well, 25% of the battery plants, they're the old technology. It's not going to catch on fire again." Well, that's what they said with fire number two, fire number three, and now every, every time there's a fire, they say, "We're going to increase, we're going to do something about this." It's bad technology, whether it's next door to our school or it's out in the middle of the field. There are so many other technologies that truly do, are responsible and green, but it's not a best plan. And I really wish before you send in saying that this is okay with us, thank you so much, Dawn Addis, for giving us some local control, but still giving those people who are making a lot of money off of all these plants and this green energy, money in their pockets. 3,200 square, 3,200 feet is too close to our schools, our estuary, our homes, our bodies.
Good evening. I want to, um, respond a little bit to the chief's comment about noticing people that may be impacted by the rains in the next three days. Um, I think one of those groups is the Panorama hillside, because if you get that much rain, some of that mud's going to come down. So I would encourage you to also notice the people that live on Panorama. And then my other comment is, thank you. Thank you for improving our streets. Thank you, thank you, and please do it again in the next cycle.
Good evening, staff. Michelle Lester Cattery, North Morro Bay. As I'm sitting in this council meeting, I'm also watching the meeting up at Moss Landing with the attorneys and Erin Brockovich, um, because there's been a massive lawsuit filed against Vistra and PG&E. So that's something to think about when we look at 303. The contamination spread up to 20 miles away. So this lawsuit is very significant as to how we, as a city, need to proceed, because it's going to impact not just us, but SLOW, the AG, the estuary. I mean, it, it goes on and on. Second of all, um, as for the Panorama, I took pictures today to see if there would be any slide, um, occurring during these heavy rains, because as I live in North Morro Bay, it would impact me. I would hope the city or somebody would monitor that slide area, um, because it's going to be pretty, you know, if it happens, it's going to be significant. Um, I spoke with several residents down in La Conchita and how its impact, I'm still to this day. They only just were able to get homeowners insurance, um, five years ago. That's, and, and nothing's been mitigated, really. It just sits there in limbo. The other concern was, oh, the audio visual. Mr. Qualick, half a million dollars is very excessive. In the upcoming financial situation and tariffs that America is going to be hit with supposedly, I think that charity needs to begin at home. We need to curtail the spending. We need to watch our budget. I think a portion of the, uh, of, you know, the audio visual and the, the whole dais and all the up and down that you would like is, is very excessive. I think we can do some things, um, right now to tie us over until we know where the states and our county and city are going forward. The more that we get hit with tariffs, the more people will not be able to spend money, which means they won't be coming to Morro Bay. They're going to be holding on to their money because they can't afford to. So I think it's something that we should discuss as a council and as a city financially.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP, do we have any hands raised in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Pro Tem. Words. Uh, we have two raised hands in the queue.
Okay.
Don't allow, uh, Dawn Addis to talk. Okay, you may begin.
Good evening. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the Morro Bay City Council and to the many residents who have called and emailed and written us letters with your strong support of AB 303. And as someone who calls Morro Bay home, who's lived there for over 20 years, I can't tell you how much it means to me to be able to represent the community, um, but also to have the city council consider 303 support. I absolutely want to say that Moss Landing is a wake-up call. The battery fire there is a wake-up call. And as I've been listening to public comment, I can hear how concerned people are, um, not just for Monterey County, but for all of us along the central coast. We've seen firsthand how rushed approvals and inadequate oversight can put our homes, our environment, and our safety at risk. So I just wanted to, uh, share two things that AB 303 will do. One is it would restore local control so that communities like Morro Bay and communities across the state of California, not just big corporations, have a say in where and how these facilities are built. And then the second thing is that it does create smart siting rules that would keep large-scale battery storage away from sensitive areas, uh, sensitive environmental areas, as well as schools, homes, and hospitals. And with those two things will strengthen the safety protection so communities can feel safe with battery energy storage being built across California. I want to say thank you to the city of Morro Bay for your support and your leadership on behalf of all communities across California who either have been affected or could have been affected by situations or could be affected by situations like this. I think we all have a shared commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to address the climate crisis that we're living in. And we know that there are many tools in the toolbox to be able to do that, and we want those tools to be safe and help move us into a green energy future. So thank you very much, uh, to the Morro Bay City Council for considering AB 303 for
Okay, we have one more raised hand with the number 135692. I will allow you to speak. There we go. Okay, you have permission to speak, but I see, it looks like you're muted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, good evening. My name is Linda Winters. I am a regular participant to the Morro Bay City Council meetings. I haven't been there in almost a month now. And, um, but first and foremost, I want to thank all of the members of the council and the, the staff, um, for their, um, letters of encouragement as far as my concerns were that I stated to all of you. Um, it will be a while before I get back and feel safe and secure. Secondly, I'd like to thank the Morro Bay Fire Department. I received the storm preparedness notice from Matt Vieira today, and I've notified all of the people within our mobile home park. And, um, unfortunately, we have the dubious distinction of having, um, grand experience as far as flooding is concerned, not that that's a really good, good feather in our cap, but we are all, um, very well-prepared for, for this storm. And hopefully, it won't create any, um, significant damages to, to the parks themselves. But we hope that if anybody needs any kind of help, um, that they will come to us as far as, uh, reaching out for getting help. And, um, and thank you, Chief McCray. It's, it's wonderful program as far as the, um, alert, uh, program is concerned, the reverse 911. Uh, thank you very much, and I hope the, the staff that's there in Washington DC, um, manage to survive all of the chill factors up there. Thank you.
Are there any more, AGP?
Hi, that was the last raised hand.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close public comment and back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem, I appreciate you doing that. I think, um, we will be able to, uh, answer some of these questions when we get to the consent agenda. And Mayor Pro Tem, I will turn it back over to you for public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'd like to go forward and invite members of the community to speak on consent agenda items only at this point. Don't have any slips, so if anyone would like to come forward at this time, you are pleased to do so.
Thank you. Betty Winholz, again. I want to speak to 7B, 7C, and 7D. And, uh, I appreciate receiving a response to 7B from staff, but if they could just confirm that the intersection at Quintana and Main is complete and that none of this money is being used for that intersection, that I would be more comfortable. Thank you. I would also, under 7C, uh, this is about the, um, no more quarterly reports. As I recall, back in the spring, that both Mr. Heimel and Corolo were supposed to take this task on. And so I'm wondering if, if staff is letting them off the hook or if the council is letting them off the hook. My concerns were the process that they're so far behind, you know, um, three quarters, which is a long time since last June. And then the content, of course, is, some of it's, um, overruns, but there was a comment that overruns aren't the same as something else. So if that could be clarified, I'd really appreciate that. And then in regard to 7D, um, this is about the AV improvement in this building. And I really find, um, spending general fund money, um, on this task outrageous, and would prefer that not happen. So if you're going to spend, um, the $300,000 or the quarter of the million dollars actually from the PEG access, that that should be your upper limit, but do you even really need to spend 200, a quarter of a million? When all the council asked for two years ago in 2023 was just make sure our equipment doesn't cut out, make sure that our back room is upgraded. Um, I don't see the need for new furniture for you guys. Um, if you want to give us some new blue chairs, we would like that. But, um, I, I find that the amount to fix this is really high. I don't think you need options. I think you just need to say, "This is what we need. Cut to the chase."
Oops. Anyone else for public comment? Come forward at this time? AGP, is there anyone, uh, with a raised hand in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Pro Tem Edwards. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. Seeing that there's none, um, we can go ahead and close consent agenda item, excuse me, consent agenda, public comment. Mayor, uh, back to you unless you wanted me to...
Thank you. I got it from here.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Qualick, can you please answer the question on 7C that was raised?
Thank you, Mayor Wickson, and members of the city council. Let me just confirm that 7C is the one I think it is. Okay, yeah, so on the quarterly report, uh, there were a couple of questions. One of the, one of the questions was whether, or maybe why, the consultants, Confluence Engineering and Corolo were scoped with this task if we were phasing it out. So they were scoped with this task for this fiscal year because we knew we still had one quarterly report to still perform. And as was, I believe was mentioned, the quarterly report is actually a full year of reporting, rather than doing four separate quarterly reports. In the last fiscal year, we decided to just do one big report, and that was to save money. And so what was scoped in the consultants' contracts were to complete this final report. And so after this, particularly with Corolo, they will no longer be working on quarterly reports. So I, I believe that answers the question. The other question is, uh, we, we did receive a public comment that, um, there are cost overruns on the WRF program in the thousands of percents. And, uh, I, I believe, and I believe this is what the constituent was referring to in her comment. Um, and, uh, in my email response, uh, I did point out that there's a difference between cost overruns and what is being presented on pages three and four of the WRF quarterly report, which have to do with a comparison of an original contract amount and a current contract amount. So a cost overrun is when something unanticipated happens and the city or the, the project owner has to change scope. That then requires a consultant to do work they were not originally contracted to do, and therefore the city has to pay more for that additional work. That's a cost overrun. What's happening, uh, on pages three and four of the WRF quarterly report is something a little different. It is comparing an original contract amount to a current contract amount. Now, some, some of those increases could be due to cost overruns, but some could just be due to, uh, an expansion of a role, uh, within a project. So for example, I think the original contract for Corolo was only $92,000. I was not here during that time, but my understanding is it, it wasn't necessarily anticipated that Corolo would be running the entire program at $92,000 over seven years. That wasn't what it, it was meant to be. And then somehow along the line, they became the program manager, they were given that role. Now it's a bigger contract. That's not necessarily... That's not necessarily a cost overrun, that's just a change in role for that particular consultant. The way that the WRF quarterly report portrays this is that, you know, it's gone up in thousands of percents, but in reality, it was, we're sort of comparing two things that need not be compared. This is one aspect of the quarterly report that I've always had a problem with, because I think it's very misleading, and it creates a feeling that we're, you know, getting fleeced, frankly, where, again, there may be some cost overruns baked in there, but it's not necessarily a cost overrun that's being reflected in that data.
Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that. Also, the intersection at Quintana and Main Street there, that was asked on the CBDG money? Mr. Qualick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One moment, I'm just conferring with Community Development Director Singal. One moment, please. I appreciate everyone's patience. So I was just confirming that this, in this year's CDBG allocation, we, there is no money being allocated for the Quintana Main project. I believe that was the question.
Thank you. I believe that money that's there, and part of that's on the SLOCOB list. Consent agenda, we're going to pull item 7D and take that separately because of a change in presentation. Does council have any items on the consent agenda they'd like to pull?
7C, please.
7C?
Yes.
Member Landrum? Ask for a motion for...
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'd like to pull 7G, please, for comment.
7C, 7G, and 7D. So we have 7A, B, E, and F. And I'd ask for a motion for those four.
Yeah, this is Jeff. I move to approve consent agenda items 7A, B, E, and F.
And a second, please. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Eccles?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Lefay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five vote.
Thank you. Item 7C, Councilmember Landrum?
I was wondering, so I appreciate, Mr. Director Qualick, what you just said, just to, the answer that you just had, but I wanted to, dang it, I lost my spot from the email I sent you. I wanted to ask about the contracts that were signed in June. So it's, I'm looking at that, and it says it expires in June, I mean, sorry, December 31st, 2026. So would...
26?
Yeah. So would that need to be amended, rather than, you know, because it's written in the contract that they're, Corolo and Confluence are doing the quarterly reports? Would we need to amend that? Or can we just not do it, have them not do it anymore? I guess maybe I should ask city attorney that question.
So I haven't reviewed the contract between the parties, but typically, if it's a time and materials or a time only, and they're not doing that report, then they simply don't charge for those reports. The question is, is making certain that we're not being charged to do those reports if they're not doing them any longer.
Okay, and then how are...
But we can look at the contract and see if amendment might be appropriate to bring back.
Okay, and then how are we making sure that we're not charged for those?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. So city staff review those invoices that we receive, and we look them over to make sure that the charges are appropriate. I would also note, though, that it was included in the scope, and indeed, both Corolo and Confluence worked on the WRF quarterly report that is being, that is included in tonight's agenda. And so it's not that the entire thing was descoped. The work that was performed to complete what is in tonight's agenda is rightly, it can rightly be invoiced for. But after this, Corolo won't be invoicing us for any other quarterly reports, because they won't be doing any other reports. But as the city attorney said, we can certainly look at whether it should be formally descoped in the contract. That's certainly an option, but in a time and materials contract, we just won't be charged that by Corolo.
Okay, so then that's just on us to make sure that we're not. And then, it's my understanding that Confluence is also doing a quarterly report. Is that something that we're going to continue doing? And so...
Thank you again for the question. And yes, this is discussed a bit in the staff report, for anyone wishing to review the language, but we do intend to continue doing a quarterly report, just a much simpler, straightforward report. I believe the reports right now are in the neighborhood of 60 pages. That's actually been brought down before they were, I believe, in the 80s. There's a lot of historical information that's just carried over from one quarter to another that we can reference or put on the website, but there's simply no need for a full review of this every single time, in staff's view. And if this is okay with the city council, we are going to present project highlights, project challenges, project budgets, some timeline items, and, you know, my goal is to keep it within four or five pages. And I believe, just from a plain language standpoint, that it'll be a much more digestible and easy-to-read report for the public.
Okay, and will, let's see, did I ask you another question in that email? I can't find that email, so I'm... I still think it's important to have the reports, you know, and so if you're, this is, I guess, what I thought of, what, from the answer you just gave, will you, it sounds like, I'm confused at who's doing the report. Is it you, the staff, or is it Confluence?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. So Confluence is already doing quarterly reports for the EPA because of our WIFI alone that is administered by the federal EPA. And a lot of that data that I just described is in those reports. And so we'll simply reuse that into the city quarterly report that we intend to bring to the Public Works Advisory Board, as well as to the city council. Staff, of course, will have a review role, and we may add some items or pictures, but we don't intend it to be a, you know, fancy production that, you know, inevitably costs money. I'll also just note one item, that when we do these quarterly reports, we have to wait for the financial data to clear from that prior quarter. And that can take six or sometimes even eight weeks. And so when these are, when they feel late, sometimes it is because of that. And we brought the, this fiscal year report to the P-WAB, I believe, in October. Sometimes with the higher production report, it takes a lot of time to complete. I anticipate that we'll be able to bring these to the P-WAB faster, and to the city council faster, because they'll be more straightforward and easy to prepare.
Okay, and that was, the other question was, will staff have enough time to handle this extra work?
Thank you for the question. It'll actually be less work, because right now, we are reading through a 60-page report. And in this case, we'll be reading through a, you know, I don't want to make promises, but I'm going to try to keep it to four or five pages, and that'll just be less review. We want to make sure that the city, the city council, the Public Works Advisory Board, the public have relevant information, but this is, this is kind of like a pile-on at this point with these reports, that, with sometimes tables, that I'm questioning whether or not they're even useful to anybody. So we want to eliminate all that fluff and just keep it very simple.
Okay. Then I move that we, if, does anyone else have, oh, I guess we have, open that up.
Just two questions, Greg. I'm just curious, on the projected recycling project, why it's so expensive when the first well was only $356,000? So I'm just questioning that.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Lefay. And I'm not sure what level of detail you'd like to hear about that, but, you know, we, it's unfortunately not a matter of just drilling some wells in the ground. There's a lot of environmental work, there's a lot of hydrogeological work that goes into even citing the locations. That's one of our major challenges. As everyone knows, the Morro Basin is relatively small. Some of our staff, not so long ago, toured Orange County, where they've been doing this since the 90s. And I mean, their basin is humongous, and it's very deep. We have to be very strategic about where we put our injection wells, and where we put them in relation to our extraction wells. We have to meet travel times, which, you know, we don't need to go and do right now, unless the council wishes to hear about that. And all of this work takes a lot of smart people to figure it out. What the city wants to avoid is what happened in neighboring Cambria, where they built out their system, a very similar system with similar goals, that they cannot get permitting for because they didn't meet their travel times. And all the infrastructure was put in the ground, the checks were sent to the contractors and the consultants, and they have a system that doesn't work. That's something we are working very hard to avoid here. That requires a lot of upfront study and consideration.
And the last question, are we even thinking about getting a grant for the demolition of the old existing wastewater treatment plant?
Thank you for the question. We're always thinking about getting grants for everything we do. I haven't seen one yet that would apply to that scope, but I can say that we are thinking creatively, particularly in the WRF Subcommittee, on other ways to achieve the desired goal there, where it's not so impactful on the city's funds.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, you had a motion?
Yeah, I, well, I have one question first. I want to make sure that we have all the information on the quarterly reports on our website.
Thank you for the question. I'm looking for a thumbs up from Damaris.
Yes, yes.
Is that on the WRF website or on the city's website? Utilities Division Manager, Damaris Hansen?
We will be adding them to the WRF website, yes. The quarterly reports and the new quarterly reports.
Okay, in the near future?
Yes.
Okay, then I, I, my motion is that we pass item, where was it? 7C?
C.
And I recommend that we have quarterly reports rather than semi, or twice a year. Bye.
A motion to approve 7C. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Eccles?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Lefay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five vote.
Thank you. I'm going to pause on 7D and go to 7G, because I believe, Mayor Protem, you said you just had some comments on that item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say, for me, thank you to the council and the staff for producing this letter regarding the support of Assembly Bill 303. I believe that Assemblymember Don Addus made a bold step in the right direction by bringing this bill forward to hold utility companies seeking to build large-scale battery energy storage facilities in communities near gathering spaces, sensitive environmental resources, and economic epicenters on pause. This in order to give us further discussion in creating stronger, more well-defined guidelines and standards. This to make sure that safety takes precedence over technological advancement. I believe that this is good and reasonable, given that there was a third incident, and arguably more negatively impactful in the community of Moss Landing. I also want to say that I recognize, as many of us probably do, that there's an importance, the critical importance, in having energy storage. When the sun isn't shining and the wind isn't blowing, we need a way to capture that energy to use it into the future. But there can't be this at the risk of the safety of a community. So when a utility company wants to build one of these structures in a community, you know, it makes me wonder when they say they want to be a true partner with the community that they want to build this infrastructure within. Why, or maybe we should question why they would want to exercise AB 205 and, you know, secure that opt-in aspect of the program, you know? Does that really mean that you're being a true partner with the community by doing that? And I feel that this really aligns with our urgency ordinance that we recently passed. And lastly, I hope that we encourage our lobbyists at the state capital to, you know, get involved in AB 303, and because I do believe that this directly aligns with our recent passage of our legislative platform as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on that?
I have a comment. I agree that 3,200 feet is not very far. I wonder if we could put language that we would even support farther away, or something like, to that, to that, you know, that language in our letter. I recently reached out to Supervisor Church in Monterey County. We had been, we had communicated before regarding the best, the possibility of the best here in Morro Bay, and I was just asking his, you know, his feedback on that. And so we kind of had stayed in touch, and I reached out to him since all of this. And he emailed me back, and, you know, I'm looking for the email right now, but it's something to the effect that he didn't, and throughout all of this, he didn't think that, you know, Vistra had any intentions of having anything like this happen. They have a lot of money involved in this, and it's, you know, like a billion dollars or something like that. But his feeling was that they don't really know what they're doing, and that is the most frightening. Perhaps that is more frightening than anything, is what he says. So I just think that that's not very far, and I don't know if we can, if we can suggest that that be increased, the distance?
I believe the Assembly bill's already been submitted to begin the process, so it wouldn't be amended at this point.
Well, could we say, could we say we support it, but, and we would even support farther away, or something like that?
Well, I think we've just, we've just put in place our emergency ordinance, and that distance, and I agree, I'm not belittling the concern that we all have, that, you know, five miles would be too close for me. But I feel that the Assembly bill's already moved into the beginning phases, and I have no problem adding another line that, you know, our encouragement would be to even look further, but I know the Assembly bill's already been presented as is.
Exactly. It's just, it's just for, you know, for the point that, you know? All right, then, should, do you, are you, doesn't, do you need a motion now, or is that...
Councilmember, Mayor Protem pulled this item, so if there's no further discussion. Cindy?
No, Mayor. So I'll go ahead and move to approve 7G on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Eccles?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Lefay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five vote.
Moving to 7D, I was asked to pull this because of the change in language in the presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Qualick, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Sorry, I'm just bringing my computer screen back up here. We did, since publishing the agenda for this night's meeting, negotiate further with Bill Gaines' audio. And in consideration of us having worked with Bill Gaines last year quite a bit on trying to figure out this system, and what exactly we can put in this building, they were agreeable to reducing the cost proposal by $7,600. And so that puts the project approval and design phase of the project down to $15,000. So that is the update that city staff has, and that will also be reflected in a reduced contract amount, that I don't have in front of me right now, but was published as an addendum publicly to the staff report.
Thank you. Yes, at $285,000. And so, Mr. Qualick, that's a design, equipment purchase and installation?
That is correct, Mayor. I would add a couple of things. So it does include three designs of three project alternatives that would come back to the city council for deliberation and a decision on procurement, which takes up around two-thirds of the cost of the entire contract, installation, and then programming and integration. And then there's also a cutout there for staff training on the system as well.
And that's a not to exceed?
That's correct, Mayor. It's a not to exceed contract. In that way, it is a time and materials contract, similar to what Mr. City Attorney Schultz said earlier. We will only get invoiced for charges incurred by the contractor, or in this case, by the consultants, on a time and materials basis.
And so that, this is not talking about any of the replacement of furniture or any of those things in the vets hall? Those are separate items as far as the upgrades to the electrical system and HVAC?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. In terms of the furniture that have to, that are potentially impacted by a new AV system, it very well could include purchase of furniture. It doesn't have to. That will largely depend on what system the city council decides to move forward with and will be the subject of discussion at the next council meeting where we present on this, which is anticipated to be in April. This agreement would not include maintenance items of the building like security, heating, or, or anything of that nature.
Thank you. And, and one more question. Do you know offhand how much the PEG access money is that's in this project?
Thank you, again, for the question, Mayor. I have that in the staff report. Let me pull it up quickly. So we have 22,000, excuse me, $227,439 of PEG.
And, and just for, for verification, the PEG money can only be used for this, correct? For the upgrades, for audiovisual, for communication?
Thank you for the question. The PEG money can be used for anything related to public broadcast of government meetings. And so there, there is some flexibility there on what we can use it for, but we certainly, it, it is restricted enough that we can't use it for anything outside of the building, like, for example, road paving. But, you know, I, I think we'd look at it on, on a case-by-case basis. Could it be used for upgrades to the bathroom in the vets hall? Probably not. But, you know, maybe electrical. It just all depends on the relationship of the scope to the system that helps us broadcast public meetings to the public.
Thank you. So the, so the additional approximately 55,000 to 60,000 is general fund money? That's all that's of general fund money?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. The short answer is yes, but I would caution the city council and the public to understand that what we have here is the highest-priced, like Cadillac option for this agreement. If the city council, if the city council in April chooses to not go with the Cadillac high-priced option, then we won't be spending that much money. And the project cost very well may fall within that $227,000 of PEG money.
Thank you for that. And, and just one last thing, just for, for public. This was a goal from the last council, goal setting was the upgrades of the vets hall. So thank you for moving forward, and I certainly hope that we can stay within the funding for that PEG access money. Any other council questions or comments on this item?
I have some questions. I guess, I guess I'll ask questions right now, not, not comments. So, or, or can we do both? Is that, is that what you said?
Yep, just if we can, yeah.
Okay. I, I, I think it's great that we have whittled the, the number down a little bit for this estimate. I would like to, I would hope that we could get it down even further and just decide on which, you know, which outcome to go with. I would hope that we could do it within the, the PEG money, the 227,000. And the, the council goal was to replace what we have. So I don't see why we would need to, you know, go for the Cadillac or really even, you know, I question whether we need to go for whatever the vehicle is that you think is in the middle. Is there any kind of, is there any kind of reuse of any of the, like, the monitors or anything like that that we can, we can do within this?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. Of course, that'll be analyzed during the design phase. I don't anticipate there would be a ton, maybe some of the monitors that are out here in front of us that were only recently purchased two or three years ago. Beyond that, most of the, the equipment is not ours. In the control room, that is mostly AGP's equipment. So we are moving to a model where the city is going to supply the equipment, and so therefore we would be purchasing almost all of that.
Is, is it all right to have a representative from AGP answer some questions?
I, I don't think that's part of the outcome.
Oh, okay.
I think they've already been included and did not, did not participate in the bid process. Is that my understanding, Mr. Qualick?
Well, my question isn't about the bid process necessarily. It's about how we're going to be using the, the equipment.
And I'd rather they didn't weigh in right now. It's not, this is a consent item and public comment is closed.
Okay. I guess I can ask, Mr. Qualick, does the, is there, you know, I, I guess I should disclose that I spoke to Steve from AGP today, and he was telling me about the, and this is why I kind of wanted him to help me on this, because I'm probably not going to get it right. But there is some kind of a dictate, the FCC dictates the money, the PEG money, that it be used for capital improvements of the PEG access channel. And that, something about designing and installing the interface on Channel 20, and that needed, that was required by the FCC?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. That, that's correct, and that's our understanding. And we plan to continue utilization of Channel 20 as a medium for broadcast of our public meetings. And I did also speak with Steve from AGP about that today. He noted that that was not specifically called out in the RFP, and I believe that that's why he's raised that concern. But I, I did assure him that that is still our plan to include that as part of the design.
And then I was hopeful that he could help us, give us some kind of an estimate, because when we're talking about three different options, there's the matter of what, you know, what the charge is to the, to implement them. Is it, is there, I, I think currently we have two people that we're paying, or we're paying them supposedly for two people. And if, the more automated it is, you would think that there would be less, less, you know, of, of AGP involved. And with the Cadillac version, you might think you would not need anybody. And I would just, I, I asked if he could kind of give us some kind of an indication of what that would mean long-term for their company, if, you know, if we matched it up to, you know, just for information, if we matched the different vehicles up to what we would need to pay their company.
And Councilmember Landrum, if I just may offer that I, I understand that AGP does plan to make a public comment during this item and would, of course, be able to address some of those questions that you raised now.
Okay. All right. So I, yeah, I guess I'm still hoping that we could come to some kind of a, an agreement on one of the options, so we can save the tax, the rate players in Morro Bay even further.
I'm gonna, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I have a few comments, not any questions. I was at the meeting where this was discussed last year. I, I don't, I think that we're at this place right now because staff wasn't given clear direction by council. Council was forced to come back and offer us three different alternatives. You know, this is a policymaking board. We should not be looking at where cameras are placed and how high. That's, that's, that's not our job as council members. We're here to set policy. So I would love to see if we could get to a decision tonight, give staff clear direction. The mayor, and I think I heard a few other folks, as well as public comment, talk about the PEG dollars. I would, what I would suggest tonight, and I'm willing to make a motion after discussion, is that we limit the not to exceed number to $227,000. We, we go essentially with the moderate plan. We can direct staff tonight to go for the mid-range, range plan. And then they can come, he'll come back to us with the actual contract. We can pick apart the contract if we want to, but we approve that tonight. Staff goes out and does its job. So to me, that's the clearest path forward right now.
I, I don't have any problem with it. The only thing, and I think you're right, Jeff, I was here at the meeting when the prior city council directed staff to come back with three options. The only other thing, if, if we do have three designs come back to us, that Cadillac version will, I, I hate to say it, but might eliminate any type of technician and save us, save the city $60,000 a year, which we're paying right now. So that's kind of why I'd like to see those three options, only in the sense is that I can weigh out each option, and then we can make a decision at the April meeting. Actually, all we're doing is making a decision today for $15,000. That, that's really all we're making the decision. And I'd like to see that come back myself personally. But if the, my, my other council people don't agree to that, I will go with your option too. But I would like to see three options so that we can then say, okay, over the next five years, the city's going to save this amount of money.
Thank you, Councilmember Lefay. I, I tend to agree with you. We have the money in the budget. That doesn't mean we're going to use it. Thank you, Councilmember Echols also. I think our goal would always be to be in the 227 where our PEG access money is. But I do agree that we wouldn't want to eliminate something without knowing what that option may look like if it were to save us money. Sometimes you spend a little to, to save a little at the other end. And we're not going to pay any more to see that option come to us. And again, this, this, not that I want to spend money just because it's in the budget, but it has been budgeted, and it was a goal. And I do not believe the goal was just to replace what we have. The goal, I believe if I have them in front of me, was that we were advocating for upgrades to the vets hall in all aspects. So I would support, and I will make a motion to approve item seven D, and I would authorize the city manager to execute an agreement of not to exceed the amount of 285,500 with the Bill Gaines Audio Company to perform design and installation services for the vets hall audiovisual upgrade project. And we'll see this come back to us, correct, Mr. Qualick?
I'm sorry, I missed that last part.
We'll see this come back to us after this vote tonight for a final decision.
Yes, if, if the city council approves us to move forward
Thank you.
Three design options, then yes.
Thank you. So I made a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Echols?
No.
Councilmember Landrum?
No.
Councilmember Lefay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Thank you. Moving on, we have one item left this evening. We have a business item, nine B, presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2324 annual comprehensive financial report. And I will turn it over to our finance director, Emily Conrad.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have with me tonight our accounting manager, Megan Scottberg, and I wanted to give her special recognition for all of her work on this lengthy and involved report. And thank you for being here tonight. We have on Zoom our auditor, partner with Brown Armstrong Accountancy Corporation, Lindsay Zimmerman, who will be providing the audit report for you tonight. AGP, can we confirm that Lindsay has been promoted to a presenter?
Give me one sec.
Thank you.
Lindsay Zimmerman. She's being promoted.
In the meantime, I wanted to thank you all for your questions that you provided me ahead of time, and I hope I was able to provide sufficient responses for you. I also wanted to give you just a very short, because it's late here and in Washington, DC, just a very short overview of what the audit process looks like. My team has been working on this for seven and a half months now, starting in July and up until last week. So it starts with setting all of our essential dates for the audit process, and it goes into an interim audit, including fieldwork, which was conducted onsite and remotely this year. The auditors provided us a list of 25 different requests that it took all staff in each division of finance to provide. They then test samples of that for accuracy, any hint of fraud, following our own internal policies, and being in compliance with those policies. While they're doing that review, we continue to do our own year-end close process, which is a list of dozens and dozens of year-end journal entries, reconciliations, and looking at all the different revenue sources, every transaction, every expenditure that the city had on our books for the entire fiscal year. So it's really a large undertaking. Next, auditors move on to a final, final audit phase in which they provide yet another list of requests. That one's more like 50 items. Again, we provide all reports. It takes every staff person in my office to do their, their own, provide the documents for their own field. And the auditors, again, select samples, and we have to provide all the documentation for them to do another round of testing. So it's a very involved, detailed look that results in this 180-page report. The report has a lot of information. It's highly summarized, and it goes into more detail as you progress deeper into it. And if you have any desire to meet with me after this meeting and go over it, I'd be happy to do that. So again, thank you to Megan Scottberg. Thank you to my staff, and I will hand it over to Lindsay.
Hello all, and thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule for me to present the audit result. A brief agenda. I will go over the scope recap, scope of services, the audit purpose, responsibilities and timeline, as well as the audit areas of focus, and an annual comprehensive financial report overview, some financial highlights. And then to the meat of the project, I will present the results of the audit. For the scope of services, we were hired to perform an audit of the city's financial statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. We also were engaged to produce a required communication letter. And then also, we report on the internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and any other matters in accordance with that government auditing standard. In terms of the scope of services of items subject to testing, which we performed throughout, as Emily touched on at the interim and final throughout, basically, half of the year, we tested the citywide assets and deferred outflows of almost, or $432 million. We also looked at the citywide liabilities and deferred inflows of $207 million, almost .5 million. We looked at almost $57 million worth of citywide revenues, and we also looked at almost $42 million of citywide expenses. And this testing was performed across all 29 funds. And so for the audit of purpose, for new members, city council members, we, an audit is to provide an independent and objective assessment of the stewardship of the governmental funds. And us as auditors, we come in independently and carefully examine and audit the books, records, accounts, and funds. And the audit is essential for government accountability and to help the city through any areas of concerns that they might have. And also just to touch on, we don't provide absolute assurance, but we do provide an independent audit of materiality. materiality. For management's responsibility, management is actually responsible for the financial statements as a whole, and to present these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in USA. Also, management is responsible to adopt and make sure the proper accounting policies are being adopted and used efficiently. And also, management is responsible to establish and maintain the effectiveness of internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, as well as to design these controls and, and policies and procedures to prevent and detect fraud. And then us as auditors, like I touched on earlier, is to perform an audit in accordance with the auditing standards generally accepted and the Government Auditing Standards. And as I am performing now, to communicate that with you, the, those charged with governance, we all, we look at, we assess the audit risk over internal controls, over financial reporting. We look at the fairness of the presentation of the financials as a whole and individual funds as a whole. And then we issue at the end, perform our, all of our due diligence through all of our review processes, and issue the opinions and the required communication letter that I'm presenting now. For audit areas of focus, there are two that rose to the level of significant risk areas, which is based on our testing and knowledge of other cities that we perform audits with, as well as other governmental entities. And so, the first one is a revenue recognition, in which we test detailed controls over cash receipts, as well as perform any other substantive analytics or any detailed testing confirmation processes with the state and whatnot to verify, and the county to verify those revenue items have been properly accounted for and properly presented. And then, as well as, the second one is the management override of controls, in that we test journal entries to make sure that they are properly supported, properly reviewed. And those are, that's where an audit risk area where people might be, try to manipulate the financials. So, we look at that in detail. We also perform inquiries of individuals involved in the financial reporting process to make sure that there's no inappropriate journal entries, unusual activity. And that, and we talked about that earlier, that perform detailed walkthroughs of significant audit areas to verify there's adequate segregation of duties. And happy report, since it's a little late, get to the point, we've got a, an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements as a whole. Also, in terms of our report and our testing over internal controls, over financial reporting and compliance, happy report that we have no non-compliance noted. And also, no, this is in terms of internal control deficiencies. We have no material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies. And in terms of the summary of the required communication letter, which we call the SaaS 114 letter, there was only one major Gatsby statement that was adopted this year, which was the accounting changes and error corrections, which didn't have any major impact to the financials as a whole. In terms of the significant estimates and disclosures, we looked at capital assets and the depreciation lives to make sure that the useful lives were properly being utilized and calculated properly. Looked at any allowance for doubtful accounts, the fund leases and subscriptions that we've gotten to adopt the last few years to make sure that those calculations were calculated properly and presented properly in the financials. We also look at the net pension liability and net OPEV, which is the other post-employment benefits liability estimate, to make sure that those were properly calculated in accordance with the actuarial assumptions and those assumptions were accurate. Happy report, we had no difficulty as part of our audit. We had no corrected or uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management, and, which I touched on earlier, with management's representation letter, that the financials are their responsibility, along with a whole long list of other things that they, management has represented to us, and no other audit findings or issues. And with that, I'd just like to open up to any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Lindsay. Any questions from council members or mayor?
Thank you.
I just really want to say thank you. This is probably one of the most important documents in our hands as we get into our, our goal-setting, to be able to see how much money we have. And to be honest with you, the real, the thing that is so eye-catching is all the, the money that we have on hand. I mean, we have $81 million in cash sitting in the bank. Our operating budget is $39 million. We could not have any revenue or any expenses for the next two years and still operate. That's good news. Thank you. And the only thing that is kind of confusing to me is all this unfunded balances that are just sitting there in the tune of about $31 million, which I think is what we need to look at when we're in goal-setting, is to see if we can actually spend some of that money. But thank you very much for all your documentation, a lot of work. And thank you for the hard copy.
You're welcome. Thank you. I would just like to clarify that, a lot of that cash sitting in the bank is for our enterprise funds. So, those, those cannot be used on general fund purposes.
I'll, I'll speak up as well. I just wanted to thank you for the report. I do have a couple of questions, but they're in-the-weeds type questions, so I'll, I'll meet with you between now and the budget cycle on those. But, yeah, as a matter of fact, when we went up to Sacramento for our legislative training, they told us to look out for this document and read through it page by page. So, I think that's what we've, we've been doing. And it's valuable information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I just have a comment, Mayor. I, ditto on everything that was just said here by my colleagues. This was a really great report. I was able to drill down on this with you. Ms. Conrad asked a lot of questions of you earlier, and apologized for them being at the last minute. I know we have busy lives. But, I too will really look forward to meeting with you. And I also look forward to our 10-year forecast that will be coming to us, because I, I think, as you said to me, I think a lot of the story will be told in that. So, I'm definitely looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, Mayor Protem, I'll turn it over to you for public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, if anyone would like to come forward to comment on this item, they're welcome to. Okay, seeing no one coming forward. AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Protem Edwards. There is no raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you. I'll close public comment on this item. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Council, any further comments or a motion for this item?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to receive and file the presentation of the 202324 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
I'll second. Oh, sorry, Mayor. I'll second.
Nope. City Clerk?
Councilmember Echols?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember LaFaye?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five, oh.
Thank you very much. Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items.
One comment. The only thing that I, is, is there an opportunity that we can discuss? You know what? Never mind.
Anyone else? Anything? Thank you, staff. Thank you to everyone in attendance. Mayor Protem, thank you for helping with the meeting this evening. I look forward to seeing you all back home, where it'll be much warmer than it is here. And with that, and Lindsay, thank you. Emily?
Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned.